Will now be recorded.
For September 28th, 2020. Uh, if everyone would please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic, to the stand, one nation, under God. Undivisible, liberty, and justice. Thank you, everyone. Uh, if I could get roll call, Abby, please.
I'm doing it. Yes, I will. Philkins?
Here.
Joe?
Here.
Bunce? Is absent? Greg?
Yes.
Bowman?
I think that was Bowman. You're cutting in and out a little bit. I'm here.
Okay. Um, Fent? Is that another one? Absent? And Putman?
Here.
And then Keetlin Brouwer, I guess. We've got Marcus and John Wallace.
Yes.
And Laura Genovich from Foster Swift.
Thank you. Is that everybody?
Yes. I believe so, so we have a quorum here for tonight. Um, to get this underway, uh, first thing on our agenda here is actually approval of the agenda here for September 28th, 2020. Someone?
Support.
Okay.
Did you start that, David, Greg?
I did, yes.
And seconded by Mr. Bowman. Roll call on that, please, Abby. Do you want to be Abby or Abigail?
Doesn't matter.
Okay.
You know. All right, Greg?
Yes.
Well, yes. Bowman with a yes.
Yes.
Schultz?
Yeah.
Philkins?
Yes.
And Putman?
Yes. Thank you, Abby. At this stage here, uh, anyone in our audience, uh, we open this up to public comments right now. Anyone wishing to give us any comments, uh, floor is yours? Or camera or phone. Sorry, we don't have the floor. It being very quiet, I will move to the next here, which, uh, is approval of July 27th, 2020, uh, meeting minutes. For those of us that, those in our audience that do follow us, um, we had no meeting in August of 2020. Just for conversation, so at this time I'd entertain, uh, actually I'll start it. The, the minutes were fine. I'll approve minutes first started out. Seconded by anyone?
I'll support.
By Ms. Philkins. Uh, roll call again, please, Abby.
Bowman?
Yes.
Philkins?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
And Putman?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Abby. Tonight, tonight we have a public hearing. The public hearing, uh, is to consider text amendments to the city's zoning ordinance regarding sidewalks and bicycle parking. Having read that, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Wallace.
Thank you. I'll, uh, share my screen here a minute. I got a quick presentation.
Are you seeing anything from my screen?
Yes.
Sure.
An ordinance ending city zoning ordinance. Okay.
Yep, this is Mike.
Uh, the trigger for these text amendments, uh, really stem from a process we've been involved in for about three years. Uh, we are in the process of trying to get, uh, redevelopment ready certified with the state. And, uh, being redevelopment ready certified, uh, basically what that would do is, uh, keep the doors open for the city to be able to apply for, uh, various grants with the state. That would include the, uh, MEDC, um, many of our redevelopment projects that we're looking at. Uh, they, uh, have required assistance from different state groups. And to be able to continue to, uh, have access to those funds, we need to be redevelopment ready certified. We're also working on trying to become, uh, eligible for community development block grant funding. And, uh, it's possible that that could come into, uh, play as well in terms of, uh, clearing, during that funding. Uh, the, uh, the adoption of these amendments, they would, uh, continue to open that door. But in addition to the redevelopment ready certified process, uh, our master plan also, uh, has a number of, uh, elements to it. And so even if we were not, uh, trying to be certified with the state, we would, uh, nonetheless be interested in adopting these text amendments, uh, principally to implement a lot of the, uh, goals which are stated in our master plan. Uh, I think I sent out in an email, uh, to everyone, uh, a link to best practices. Uh, I didn't want to go through tonight, uh, all the different, uh, objectives that they outline in their booklet. Uh, they've reduced it to a chart, which I'll show next. But if you really want to dig into all the things that, uh, the state requires to be certified, you should really go through this book. And essentially, I think why they've done this is because, uh, through experience, uh, they have limited funds that they can share with local, uh, governments. And I think it's their goal to make sure that they'll, they'll be distributing money to, uh, communities that are best positioned, uh, to implement redevelopment and have the redevelopment actually, uh, be successful and work because of the different processes that are in place, uh, that through their experience they found makes a community, uh, more successful. Uh, this is basically the chart that they use. And then basically all those code numbers link back to objectives that they have that we need to meet to, uh, be approved through the process. And, uh, you essentially see two charts here. The one on the top, uh, was the first, uh, evaluation chart we received. And you'll see, uh, things that are in the, uh, yellow and green and red. Uh, red means we hadn't really, uh, achieved anything on that front. Yellow, we were somewhere in process, sort of meeting the requirement, but sort of not. And, uh, the green, uh, area, green areas were areas that we were already meeting the, uh, objectives of the program. And so you can see when, uh, you're going from the top, top chart to the bottom chart, uh, just how much, uh, progress the city's made. Uh, with now, almost the entire chart showing that the city's achieved, uh, full compliance with the program. Uh, I think there's only, uh, three items left that we're trying to, uh, achieve, uh, to reach our certification process. So, uh, hopefully within the next few months, we would be able to complete this process. I need to check, uh, with our representative to see if that also requires any additional zoning amendments. But, uh, we're very close and hopefully we'll achieve that, uh, in the very near future. Uh, one of the things I wanted to show in this presentation too, uh, Pablo Majano, he is our representative with the state. He sent me some, uh, links to some ordinances that other communities, uh, were adopting that, uh, going through the same process and things that they had adopted to, uh, to meet the standards from the state. And you can see some of the, uh, standards relate to similar things, uh, particularly with respect to sidewalks and pathways. And, uh, these are areas that, uh, they may have already had in their ordinance or they may have had to add to their ordinance to, uh, reach compliance. But nonetheless, they are cities that, uh, Pablo, uh, sent to us as, uh, opportunities to, uh, model after. And a couple more sections from the, uh, Flat Rock code. Now, there are many, many, many cities that are, uh, uh, have been certified for the redevelopment ready communities. Um, I could probably go to many, many more and, and put out more information. I didn't want to belabor that, that point, but just wanted to show some of the examples of what other, uh, communities are doing. Um, as a case in point, I wanted to show that the site plan review, uh, site plan approvals that we've been doing lately have already been achieving, uh, the goals of this ordinance amendment, at least as it relates to, uh, sidewalks. Uh, as you can see on this, this plan, this is actually one that's coming up. It's a site plan that, uh, one of the marijuana businesses has submitted. Uh, you can see that they, uh, are showing sidewalk, uh, on the, uh, public rights away. They're also showing, uh, sidewalk along the principal, uh, parking areas that lead back to, uh, the principal entrance to the building. So this is a very good example of exactly, uh, the kind of thing that we're, uh, trying to achieve, uh, in the ordinance amendment. This is another one. This was a special use permit, uh, approved by the planning commission that was Chris Doyle. Again, you have a connection, uh, from the principal entrance back to the public sidewalk system. And a majority of the parking, uh, was linked back to the private and public sidewalk system. Um, by virtue of the onsite connections. Uh, it won't always be possible to have every last space be connected by sidewalk. And, uh, I'm going to talk about a slight change that I made that I'll explain later. But I'm basically going to be talking about the principal parking areas being linked back to the, uh, primary entrance. Uh, this particular site plan was also approved in the last few months. Uh, it's, uh, Rob Mungar's, uh, brewery, uh, project at 412, um, South Mitchell. Uh, you can see that, uh, there are walkways, uh, walkways in front of the building. And that hatchway was originally going to be asphalt, but it was changed to, uh, concrete. And so, uh, you have direct sidewalk linkages to the majority of the parking area. And, uh, you also see, uh, in this area where there will be a connection made that comes down. It doesn't, can't connect directly to the private sidewalk system, but, uh, it's the next best thing, which, uh, uh, gives a very, uh, uh, good directive as to how to best access that, uh, private sidewalk system. And coming in at that location, it also avoids, uh, uh, conflict where, where cars are turning into the project. Uh, with that, I'd probably, uh, would like to, uh, talk a little bit, uh, about the, uh, bicycle portion. Uh, the bicycle portion is meant to, uh, try to, uh, move, um, closer to having a multimodal priority in the city. Uh, ever since the 50s and 60s, we, uh, have learned to become a very auto-centric community. Um, in fact, in my observation, uh, around town, uh, you know, many times even in the wintertime, see pedestrians choose to, uh, use the street system over the sidewalk system, uh, simply because we've, uh, become so concerned about the quality of the streets that the streets are actually a better, uh, they, people view the streets as a safer alternative to walk in as opposed to the sidewalks during the wintertime. Also, we have, uh, a lot of partial linkages of neighborhoods to, say, grocery stores, but the sidewalk systems are incomplete. Uh, I think it will be going forward, uh, the city's, uh, goals to continue to improve walkability. Uh, I sent out in a second memo to everyone, uh, a variety of excerpts from our master plan. Let me see if I can find that. Does that show up on the screen? It's a text document?
No.
Okay.
You have recommended motion on there right now.
Okay. Are you seeing excerpts now?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, and this is important. Um, master plan was written and adopted approximately five years ago. Uh, it was written prior to my arrival with the city. I think my, one of my first, uh, jobs here was to try to, uh, get it to go through the approval process with the city. Uh, so I didn't really have a, a role in writing it, but simply getting it adopted and, and, uh, then working with it since then. But as you, as you read, uh, through a lot of the entries in here, the, uh, master plan speaks to, uh, walkability and it doesn't talk about it only in the downtown area. It addresses it in basically all our commercial districts, whether it be, uh, downtown, North Mitchell, South Mitchell. Um, also, uh, talks about, uh, out on division. So it's, it's throughout the town and basically, uh, the, this ordinance amendment addresses sidewalks, uh, principally for, uh, business developments. So there is a high degree of correlation, uh, between, uh, what's in the master plan and the, uh, the manner in which we propose to, uh, uh, put in this amendment with respect to, uh, adding sidewalks within the community. Another project, uh, I've been working with Prina Newhoff and they've been working on, uh, Safe Routes to School grant application. Uh, probably within the next several months, that'll be submitted. And basically we're looking to try to go after about $800,000 to continue to do, uh, sidewalk development uh, within the city and hopefully to get, uh, grant dollars that will help, uh, facilitate that. So it's an ongoing effort, uh, consistent with the master plan. Also, one that we're trying to help facilitate, uh, with other grant dollars to help underwrite, uh, the effort to have sidewalks without having it to, uh, be paid for by, um, 100% through, uh, uh, business owners or residents or anything to that effect. Uh, are you seeing the actual copy for the ordinance now?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, maybe before I start walking through the ordinance, um, it would be helpful to, uh, maybe stop now and see if, uh, any, anybody has some questions, uh, about the process leading up to the amendments or, um, any of the issues that I've talked to to date. And then maybe we can, uh, dig into a little bit about the actual wording of the ordinance. Uh, does anybody have any questions?
I have one or two. Mr. Chair, if you wouldn't mind?
Uh, go, Joe.
Uh, just real quick, uh, John, you mentioned, um, redevelopment ready community designation is also a condition of CDBG, um, the community development block grant money. Is that, is that correct?
Uh, I'm not 100% sure of that. It, it could become, uh, something that's, it's looked at. Marcus, I don't know if you've heard, seen that, uh, connection, uh, drawn or not.
That's a great question. I don't believe you are required to be redevelopment ready certified in order to qualify for the CDBG funding. The CDBG funding is, uh, a federal program that the state facilitates. Um, certainly it, it probably wouldn't hurt or hinder in any way, uh, if we are RRC, uh, redevelopment ready certified short. But for that specific program, I, I don't believe you have, um, that specification in place to qualify for. We certainly didn't have it in place when the, um, state awarded us a, uh, almost million dollar CDBG grant, um, I would say six months, two year ago for the Facebook projects.
Yeah, and I guess relevant to that point, Marcus, you know, we've been, you know, as I read the RRC materials, we've been in progress, right? Or whatever the right phrase is that we've been working diligently towards.
Engaged.
Engaged, that's it.
Yes.
So obviously we've been engaged. How, how long is the engaged designation or status, uh, good for? How long can we continue to, in a good faith basis, move towards this?
So we, we have been engaged for perhaps the better part now of about three to four years, uh, give or take a couple of months on either side. We are, um, uh, enjoying a rather long engagement. Um, the state of Michigan would prefer that you get sort of in and out of the program within a year or two at the most. Uh, we have been, uh, for good reason, a little slower than most because we've been really busy, uh, actually working on development, economic development projects that our community has been wrestling. Uh, the bitter side to that is, you know, I only have one John and I only have one Mike. And, uh, Mike, uh, for, uh, Mike Coy for most of the time thus far has been sort of that army of one where I haven't been able to just say, okay, you know, here's a staff person who's dedicated to this thing. Now get the job done. Uh, uh, and therefore we've been, we've been, it's been taking Cadillac quite a while to, to get to where we're at. Uh, the state of Michigan has been trying to get us, uh, across that finish line now for, for quite some time. In fact, they were really trying to see if they could sort of flex their rules while keeping us within it, uh, back when we applied for the original CDBG grant so that they could sort of champion how we're an RRC certified, uh, community at that point. We just were too far away at that juncture. I think they're going to continue to work with us as we, as we go through the steps, but certainly they'd like to see us, uh, cross that, cross that line sooner than later.
Great, thank you. That was all I had before the substance, Mr. Chair.
Anyone else have questions? Okay, with that, maybe, uh, I'll, uh, kind of briefly go over what the, uh, ordinance amendments, uh, are about. Um, I guess a real brief, uh, snapshot I sent to you in a memo. Um, and that was a rather short version of the essence of, uh, the sidewalks. Uh, I'll give you a brief overview and then I'll dig into the actual ordinance. But essentially with respect to the sidewalks, uh, much like the site plans that I was showing you, the principal goal is to have businesses, uh, number one, have sidewalks on their public rights away, uh, if they are, are already not in existence. And again, this would be for, uh, new construction. This would not be retroactive to, uh, tell people that I've already built that they have to start constructing, uh, these facilities. But with new development that they would be required to put in those sidewalks. And that, uh, the principal parking areas, and, and you can tell by the site plans that you've already seen, uh, there's not a sidewalk by every parking bay, but there are sidewalks by the majority and what I've chosen to call the principal parking areas, that there'd be a linkage from the principal parking area back to the, uh, uh, main, uh, primary access, uh, location for the business. And so that that private sidewalk connects the parking to the front entrance, but then also that the private sidewalk connects to the public sidewalk system so that you have, uh, full connection between public and private on the site. Uh, obviously there will be some portions of the site that don't have sidewalk. And the idea was to cover, uh, the main flow of pedestrian movement, but understanding that, uh, limited site size and other factors, uh, don't always allow it to, uh, be there for every parking bay, uh, on the site. Uh, so essentially that's, uh, what was, uh, being attempted to, uh, be achieved on the sidewalk front. On the bicycle front, um, it's, uh, again, uh, aimed at trying to implement some of the master plan objectives, but also the redevelopment ready objectives, which is to try to, in some way, uh, promote multimodality, uh, not being 100% car-centric, to, uh, allow, uh, a little less, maybe car traffic, maybe in some small way, a little fewer, less, uh, parking spaces. And, uh, then to switch into, uh, bicycle, uh, type parking. I've observed in our, say, in our downtown area now, we've had a lot of bicycle parking, which, uh, takes place, uh, and bikes are being locked up against, uh, facilities that really they shouldn't be. Uh, we have a lot of, uh, nicely coated, uh, decorative light poles and trees and other things, and people are locking up, uh, two things that really, uh, are somewhat destructive to our public infrastructure. And I think, uh, what we've done in this amendment is really come in at a real base level. I think if you look at the table that, uh, is included in the ordinance, you'll see that for most businesses, uh, it would only require, uh, two or four, um, bicycle parking spaces. Uh, the cost for doing that, uh, uh, could be a matter of $150, $200. Sometimes it might be a wash if they can, uh, eliminate one or two, uh, pay parking spaces. Of course, they're going to, uh, reduce their asphalt costs by some degree. And we've allowed, uh, up to 5% of the overall parking demand to be met by bicycle racks if they choose to, uh, reduce their, uh, you know, their auto parking count. So, uh, it, it's in a small way, just starting down a path of trying to, uh, support, um, more bicycle travel and pedestrian travel. And, uh, with the, uh, bicycle travel too, um, just trying to make sure that, uh, um, as we build more bike infrastructure on our streets, we do have a complete streets policy now where, uh, a lot of our projects and our street paving projects are adding more bike infrastructure. And as we do that, uh, that bike infrastructure, as it becomes more complete and there's more complete routes that appear in the city. and there's more complete routes that appear in the city, uh, such action will then create more demand for, uh, bicycle ridership. And then that need to have those bikes to be placed somewhere, uh, becomes important. Uh, we just, we're lucky enough to, fortunate enough to have, uh, five or six new artistic bicycle racks added to the Cadillac Commons area this year, which was a really nice addition. Uh, I think the, uh, community foundation, uh, wrote for a grant. I can't remember who they received it from. But, uh, they were behind, uh, implementing that small, uh, addition of, uh, bike parking in the, in the Commons area. Uh, so with that, maybe, I don't know that I'll, I'll read every sentence of this. Maybe just, um, pertinent points.
A lot of those funds came from the, uh, Rotary, local Rotary group and, and Rotary charities.
Okay. Uh, the other thing too, I noticed in here, um, uh, multifamily developments, uh, with fewer than four. So all our, uh, all our smaller, uh, apartments, uh, that might be converted houses or just really small apartment buildings, uh, would be exempt, uh, from this ordinance. Uh, talking about, uh, how they would be constructed on the sidewalk front, basically, uh, hard surface, asphalt, concrete, brick pavers, uh, that type of thing. Uh, main, maintain a minimum width of five feet. Usually, that has been our standard for, uh, handicap access. Um, uh, be designed to limit potential conflicts, uh, between pedestrians using the sidewalks and nearby motorized traffic. Uh, just some really common sense design features that, you know, you just, as much as possible, try to keep conflicting movements between cars and, and sidewalks, uh, separate as you, as you possibly can. Uh, uh, because the sidewalk system will be also used in the downtown just to be, uh, things done in harmony, uh, with, uh, the design for the downtown. Uh, requires that it meets, uh, engineering standards set by the city through the engineering department. And then we also wanted to, uh, create some opportunity through, uh, shared, uh, private sidewalk system. Say there's two businesses side by side and they both want to connect their systems out to the public sidewalk. If they choose to do that, uh, say on a common property line, they could, uh, save money by doing that together and just simply, uh, have, uh, have a joint easement recorded between the two businesses. So where we can, we are trying to see if there's, uh, ability to, uh, save money in the process of the, the design. Uh, we do also have some very basic, uh, physical standards for the ordinance. And, uh, you can see on item number five there, uh, set, setting up for how the locking devices and support works, uh, anchoring of the, uh, bike rack, uh, establishing parking space size, uh, vertical obstructions, maneuvering space, the amount of space that you have to keep around the bike, both for it to, um, be approachable to be chained and unchained. But also keeping in mind how those, uh, bicycle parking, uh, affects adjoining, uh, pedestrian ways and sidewalks so that, uh, we do not interfere with the, uh, five feet of maneuvering space that we usually require for our sidewalk systems so that the bike space doesn't interfere with the pedestrian circulation space. Uh, also require that, uh, the bike facilities be located in a highly visible, uh, well-lighted area to the degree possible. Uh, again, uh, with bicycles nowadays, uh, bicycles can cost any...
We lost you, John.
Where from, you know, you could probably pick one up on the cheap end for a hundred or so dollars, but they're a bit, you know, two, three, four thousand dollars. And so some of what we were trying to do too was to ensure that where, uh, we provide for, uh, the parking of bikes, that, uh, uh, we try to keep them as much as possible in the eyes of as many people as possible, either through people viewing that through storefronts or from doorways or on the street. Again, just to, uh, maybe reduce the potential for, uh, bikes being stolen or dam- or damaged while they're, uh, being parked. Uh, you can see on the calculation rules, uh, just basically, uh, tells you how to calculate the, uh, the required spaces. Uh, you can look through the table on the right where it says bicycle parking requirement for most uses. Um, you can see that the required spaces are rather low. Uh, I think for most things, they're either two spaces or four spaces. So, uh, again, it shouldn't be, uh, from a, uh, capital perspective, uh, too much of a roadblock, uh, to, to meet those requirements. And I think I mentioned before that we do, uh, give an automobile parking credit. Uh, so to some degree, I think we're allowing up to five percent of the total parking demand, uh, for, uh, the required development to be met through bicycle parking if they so desire, but that would be, uh, up to them. Uh, with that, I think I'll go back and talk about, uh, a few of the changes that I actually made today. There's not many, but I, uh, am, am reviewing it again for a last time before this meeting. I came up with a few things that I thought was important to, uh, to change in the ordinance and I'll, I'll call that up. Are you seeing a recommended motion on there?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, you'll see in, in, uh, the wording there is, uh, some areas that I changed. Um, basically would be recommending that the planning commission recommend to the city council that this ordinance and ordinance amending the city zoning ordinance regarding, uh, pedestrian sidewalks and bike parking be approved as presented, uh, with the following changes. And, uh, one of those changes was in subsection 12. And, uh, basically what these changes amounted to, and I can read through it, was, uh, changing the requirement to have these sidewalks, uh, connected to, uh, a principal entry. I can read through that. All businesses, services, and multiple family development possessing four or more dwelling units in all zone districts shall provide a private sidewalk system, pedestrian access and circulation feature for the safe and convenient movement of pedestrians from the principal parking area. Uh, and that's another term, the principal parking area. Again, I, I don't want to get hung up on there being a sidewalk for every last parking space in a parking lot. So from the principal parking area to the primary access door, those are two words I introduced so that, uh, people could not construe, uh, this to require more sidewalking than what is reasonably necessary in the site development. Um, so from the principal parking area to the primary access door serving customers, clients, patrons, employees, and or residents, a public sidewalk length any street right-of-way and a private side sidewalk system from the primary access door, again, that term, primary access door, to the public sidewalks. These requirements shall also apply to industrial uses. Provided, however, in cases where no adjoining, uh, right-of-way contains an existing public sidewalk, industrial uses shall not be required to provide public sidewalks nor a private, private sidewalk system from the primary access door to the public sidewalk system. So again, except in maybe some very limited cases where, uh, existing sidewalk systems bought directly to an industrial use, uh, industrial uses would be, uh, uh, exempt from this requirement. And then, uh, I also changed subsection four. And again, I'll read through that. Uh, bicycle parking shall be placed within fifty feet of a public primary business entrance to the building or commercial use being served by said parking and should be in a well-traffic location visible from the entrance. Where applicable and possible, bicycle parking should be placed within view of storefront windows. Not making that mandatory, but again, just calling it out as a, as an ideal if you can achieve it, uh, but not required. When a public primary entrance fronts a public sidewalk, public alley, or public parking lot on which bicycle parking is proposed replacement, the installer shall obtain an encroachment permit from the city to install the bicycle parking in the public right-of-way. In the event the right-of-way falls under the jurisdiction of Michigan Department of Transportation, or MDOT, the installer shall obtain an encroachment permit from MDOT or install the bicycle parking in said right-of-way and submit a copy to the city. Uh, and then one of the sentences, uh, public building entrance, uh, excludes garage entrances, trash room entrances, and other building entrances that are not publicly accessible. That's no longer needed because we speak to the, uh, public primary business entrance. So, uh, that little bit of wording, uh, was able to be taken out. And, uh, also, it, uh, is an opportunity possibly for that bicycle parking to be met, uh, not on private property, but if it can be done acceptably in the, uh, city right-of-way, uh, that becomes a possibility. Of course, it would require city approval. But if it could be worked out, I see no reason why, um, uh, we wouldn't want to see that happen, uh, in a number of instances. Uh, so basically, uh, that is it. You have a copy of the, uh, entire ordinance. Those, uh, those two paragraphs are the only two that I'm really proposing to change. And really, the reason for that proposed change is to, uh, somewhat, uh, so that the ordinance couldn't be, uh, read too broadly to extend it to many areas more than we even wanted to achieve, uh, as part of this process. So I made those to, uh, more or less achieve what you saw on those site plans that I showed earlier, uh, that when you're meeting the primary intent of moving people from the parking to the main entrance or from the main entrance to the public sidewalk system, that a majority of those movements are accommodated, realizing that there'll be, uh, a remnant, small parking bay here or there, uh, that will not meet this system. And I think that's, uh, perfectly fine. I think it's one of the limitations you run into uh, with a lot of the tighter commercial sites that we see in, in our city. I guess with that, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to, uh, to answer them.
Just a initial point of clarification, uh, Mr. Chair. I think, um, John, you've got a typo on the first one. I assume, uh, Ms. Genovich will fix all of those, but...
Yeah, we'll fix it. I was working on that frantically about an hour ago.
And the second one just has, it says the subsection and it should be sub-paragraph four of subsection C. So I just wanted to draw attention to that, so, before we got into the conversation.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I've got a question. If you're opening the floor or...
Sure, um, John has opened the questions, so go ahead, Mr. Bowman.
I'll just start with the sidewalk piece. Where, Mike, it seems whenever we've approved a site plan, there's always been plans for, um, sidewalks. Is there a place that this will apply that it didn't apply before? This requirement to have private sidewalks?
Well, um, I think for the most part, I think our only requirements, uh, I think we had specific requirements in the Terry D, uh, project by virtue of it being an MPUD. And I think there was another particular case where we had sidewalk requirements. But I think it will be expanding where this is required. Although, keep in mind, it was not going to be a retroactive, uh, thing to, to, uh, existing businesses, but, uh, merely to, to new construction.
It just seems that everything we've approved has always had a sidewalk requirement. So I was just kind of interested if there was something beyond that. You know, if I think about the lofts or I think about the, um, senior housing that hasn't happened on Mitchell yet, but they've all had sidewalk plans, right? As part of the kind of civil engineering?
Well, of course, with, with the lofts, that was, uh, again, an MPUD. And so we have the ability through the MPUD to, uh, ask for a lot of things that we don't normally, uh, have the ability to ask for when we're doing things through standard zoning language, through standard, uh, site plant review process. Uh, it becomes more of a negotiated thing with the MPUDs that, um, you know, we look for certain concessions, the, the developer looks for certain concessions, and we try to, uh, meet in a happy middle ground. Uh, I think with the lofts, we were, uh, asked to look at a little less parking requirement. But then again, we were also, uh, looking at some pretty high qual- quality standards on, on some of the site design. So, uh, I think it worked out well in, in that case.
Correct me if I'm wrong, John. I think some of the new possible subdivisions that came in front of us but have not proceeded would fall into the sidewalk requirement, correct?
Well, I think, I think the wording talks about, uh, business cert- and services. I don't know that this would, I, in my reading, I don't think it would apply to, uh, to those subdivisions. However, I think we have other standards in place that might make those applicable, which are general, uh, city standards that apply to infrastructure when you're looking at uh, subdivisions, which are a different animal than, uh, an individual business, uh, looking to, uh, develop a individual site. I think the city's adopted power...
Oh, you dropped out again for some reason, John.
...has then, uh, come into play, uh, with respect to those subdivisions.
I'm not very good at reading.
You couldn't, you couldn't hear me?
No, not parts and pieces. And I know I'm not the only one, so...
Can anyone else hear me?
Yeah, we can, we can hear you now. You just cut out in the middle of your sentence and then came back.
Oh, okay. Uh, I, I was saying that the subdivision control ordinance, uh, people coming in under that are required to, uh, meet standard, uh, city policy uh, with respect to, uh, infrastructure for, uh, those larger-scale developments and are viewed differently than coming in for an individual site development on, uh, say, a small commercial site.
Anyone else have any other questions yet for John before I open the public hearing?
I guess maybe, yeah, it's... I'm not sure if it's a question or not, Mr. Chair, so I... I'm not sure if it's a question or not, Mr. Chair, so I guess it's up to you. I can wait till after you open it or...
Go ahead. Let's get her out there now.
I guess I'm, this is a philosophical issue that I raised with Mr. Wallace and Marcus that there are lots of ways that sidewalks seem public safety to me. And they seem very important and useful to a city and especially as we continue to build out. The incentivization of bicycles also seems like a really important thing for the city's future. And I think it's the philosophical difference in my mind is how we go about it. And whether requirements on minimum number of bicycle spots is the right way to do it is essentially a while a low potential impact on new businesses, it is admittedly an impact on businesses. And if the city, I believe, if the city believes strongly in bicycles, perhaps we use our space, we use our money. We use the city's money as opposed to businesses that we hope to draw to downtown. While intermodal transportation is, I believe, an important future for us, especially with emissions and all of those other things, I question whether this is the right method to go about it. So there's no question in there, I guess, so.
Statement. John or Marcus' response on that?
Well, again, I've been sitting at this meeting that the reason for this ordinance amendment is twofold. I mean, obviously, it's to meet the redevelopment-ready communities, but secondarily, it is for the master plan. Now Joe's comment, when we're just talking about how we might meet it through just master plan alone. I think that makes more, you know, more sense. I think where we might run into some more challenges is how do we keep redevelopment-ready staff happy with what we've done? The other areas that we could meet their criteria, I think could be equally or greater cumbersome on a business. I thought that I probably picked the lesser of evils in terms of burden to a business to to try to get us over the hurdle of meeting their criteria. Obviously, we could look at the other areas that you could try to meet some of those standards. But I don't know that the businesses would fare better. That said, I think the city could, should be open where it does not harm where it does not harm the movement of people in general on our right of way. Why we would not be willing to consider some bike parking within our right of way, which means they do not have to consume private space to implement this. But we do see evidence that it's needed because as I say, I didn't have time to gather pictures, but we could gather pictures of a lot of odd-looking parking situations around town at different times. So that's basically it. I think there's always more than one way to address something. In this particular case, we've got a very specific goal that we're trying to achieve. And that is to cross the finish line on redevelopment-ready communities.
I echo John's comments. I think that, and John didn't say this, but for a lot of the standards, and there was a chart that you guys saw earlier on in the presentation, it showed the level of completeness. There was a negotiation, I guess I could say. For several of those, as we were working with our representative, it was signed to us from the MEDC. In order to help us, you know, turn red squares, you know, to yellow to then green. I think that at this point, we're getting really close and I certainly understand the concerns that Mr. Bowman's raised, and I think they're good ones. I think that, you know, just in general, the entire redevelopment-ready certification program, you know, is one where a lot of municipalities, Cadillac included, I've actually spent a lot of time sort of think, steering committee group to help provide guidance when it's all, that started a couple of years ago. You know, there's, there are issues with its implementation that a one-size-fits-all approach may not be the best approach for all municipalities. But all that said, I think that what John is recommending this evening, you know, helps us get a little bit further and it also helps us overall with some of the master planning considerations that we're also looking at at the same time. So whatever that may be worth, I hope that helps.
I would just appreciate everyone's comments. And it shows how thoughtful we are in our approach to becoming designated as a development-ready community. And I know I was really excited tonight to see all of those red and yellow boxes gone. And how close we are to taking that next step. And it's really it's really a good feeling when we go down to the Michigan Municipal League and we talk about what's going on in Cadillac. And this is something we've been working on for a very, very long time. And I just want to say, John, that I appreciate your approach to being very careful about how it will financially impact business owners and people who want to do development in our community. So thank you.
Thank you. I have a unique, you know, obligation to look out for the city's interests while trying to get us over that hurdle. And Marcus will attest to the fact that I'm not always quick to jump on board with everything that they throw out there. So believe me when I say I push back.
That's an understatement.
One, he seemed to want to go too far. But I am always conscious of who we are as a city, wanting quality design, but understanding that we're you know, not one of those super affluent communities where you can go to the nth degree on every little design feature on a site.
Yeah, and I would just say to Joe too, you know, your observation of all of these developments that are going on right now, that they all include sidewalks. And so we are really just looking at bringing up the ordinance to match what we were doing with the current development. And the developers that we have worked with have all been willing to come on board with that request by the city.
I'm completely in support of the sidewalk piece that a mayor, so it's the other half that I've got a concern with, so.
Yeah.
You know, my experience, what happens with bicycles is, you know, until you develop your infrastructure to a certain point, it looks like an uphill battle. And then when you cross over a certain point, all of a sudden, people understand that the connectivity is finally there to start riding their bikes a lot more. And then it really takes off. I was able to see that in Fort Wayne when I was there. And I've seen it other places. It's a struggle for a while, but then eventually, once you get enough connectivity put together, then the ridership just kind of all of a sudden just takes right off. And so that's maybe something in future years we'll see happen in the city.
Joe, this is Mike. If I might add, you know, John and I, particularly with the bicycle piece. You know, I look at it particularly when you look at the lofts or you look at the marketplace and things like that, which there are some residential neighbors nearby or neighborhoods. You know, you can almost see a potential need for fewer visitor parking spaces. And that's just something I've personally seen.
Question for either John and/or even Mike, because Mike gets out there. Are there any other bicycle racks other than what you just mentioned? Does the city have any on any corners or anything downtown?
Well, we do have in the core downtown on some intersections, we do have some bicycle racks. And even at times, I've even seen those overflowed with bikes, not all the time, obviously. But I guess the issue there is that, you know, if you're in a mid-block shop, your bike is down on the corner. And of course, there's no visual connection. So it's not ideal, but it works to a certain degree. And so that's just the other point. Mike, you can maybe speak to where you know that you've seen bike racks, if there's other places.
No, you know, you see them used at certain times, certain places. Ken Payne has done a wonderful job of actually moving some bike racks. Ken, our Public Works Operations Manager, moving bike racks from areas where he sees nobody's using them to maybe areas where he sees them being used more frequently. I really like the new ones that were just installed. They have an artistic look. I don't think people realize yet that they're bike racks. They're really nice and I just don't think people yet have figured out that these are bike racks, not just something ornamental. But I just, I just think they're going to get used. They're going to get used. I mean, I live close to town like you, Joe, and you know, there are times I do ride my bike into town and I definitely look for a bike rack to lock it up.
Thank you for those answers. At this time, if staff and everybody is ready, we can open the public hearing to the public? Yes?
Yes.
So I guess at this time, if we have public watching us, anyone wishing to speak in favor of the ordinance change or disagrees with the ordinance change, please reach out to us.
Hi, John?
Yes.
Hi, Mr. Adams.
This is Jerry Adams, 110 Vine Street, Cadillac, Michigan. And I'm very supportive of the ordinance as written. I think that the bike racks and the sidewalks are sorely needed within the city. And I would support their approval and I hope you will do likewise.
Awesome. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
If everyone thinks I've given some sufficient time, I would go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. I do think the, our board has discussed most of this. But at this time, I'll close public hearing. And if there's any other questions from board members for either that John can answer or Marcus is with us, or even Mike. We'll open that right now. If there's any other questions or staff, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
Before we get into the motion, Laura, you've seen my proposed changes. I don't know if you've been trying to clean up the typos.
I did not. I did not clean up the typos because I don't think I have a word version of your most recent changes. But we can certainly clean up those aesthetics before it goes to council. That's not a problem.
Okay. Do you think the way I have the recommended motion is appropriate?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
John, am I still muted?
We can hear you.
Yeah, we can hear you.
I'm playing with my phone here. I apologize. This is Caitlin Barard, 10816 Blackwood Drive, Cadillac, Michigan. I just wanted to, real quick, appreciate it Marcus and John for all of your work and planning. Out of all the bike racks and affordability and walkability, this is our affordable plans that I've seen and as we're doing attraction and retention of businesses, residents, and tourists to the area. If you did a full job, but it's very simple to implement and more cost-effective than others. So thank you for all your work and for presenting tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Caitlin.
Mr. Chair, I'd be glad to make the first half of that motion related to the sidewalk ordinance. If we could split them into two, I'd appreciate that.
Are there changes you want on the bicycle one as while you're stopping?
Oh, I'm not going to support the bicycle.
Not going to support bicycle. Is it because of the cost of racks?
No, it's the philosophical difference, I believe. And if it's important to the city, I believe the city, much like public parking lots and other things like that, should support the advent of that intermodal transportation. And/or we should take some initial steps to see if incentivizing it through creation of just some additional racks in certain places could give us evidence to suggest this requirement on new businesses being drawn to town would be fruitful.
Understood. Any thoughts on that, Marcus, since I'm going to throw the city thing here at you?
You know, I think, I think Mr. Bowman makes a good point. Ultimately, you know, this is a policy question. The recommendation this evening from staff would be to support the motion, but certainly it's up to the Planning Commission as to whether or not you would wish to follow that recommendation or not. John can, you know, reiterate if needed, some of the more technical reasons as to why it was being recommended. From the sort of position or shoes that I feel with the organization. I'm looking at it from a higher altitude, really looking at it specifically from trying to get across that RRC finish line as soon as we can. But I think that there's been good dialogue on both ends and it's at the point now where it's ready to ready for consideration or further, you know, discussion.
And certainly, Mr. Chair, you could lump them together and you could take the motion, especially if I'm the only naysayer. I really just wanted to support the sidewalk, so.
Understood, Jim.
And Chairman Puff, I think that it's okay to split the motion. I know that I personally don't have a problem with that, especially if if we have a member on the board that is looking to be on the record specifically and support a part of it, so.
Yeah, I agree. There's no problem legally splitting that.
Okay. Short of going for our requirements, if you will. Is it possible the bike ordinance can be tweaked down the road then? City's main concern is that we fulfill the, I'm sure our requirements are not needed here to be charged in the businesses and stuff. Is it possible for this to be tweaked? But still do our recommendation?
Yeah, the city council can always modify and amend an ordinance. One council cannot bar another council from taking future action. And in my tenure here, and I'm having trouble thinking of the example, but I know there's been probably one or two things when a current council has undone or has done something different than what a previous council has set up. And not only during that type of, like, can something change, but certainly during the city's master planning process, we can also make some adjustments as well.
Joe, it may not be as bad. On new businesses, it may not. Biggest thing is probably to move through so we can get the RRC status in place. Am I correct, John?
Yeah, so the other thing to keep in mind is we're not terribly far away from bringing an entire ordinance rewrite back to the Planning Commission. And so if we see any problems with this, we certainly have a chance within the next hopefully a few months to take another shot at it. So it's not like it has to be for an extended period of time that this is what's in place. Because we do, hopefully, we'll have a more comprehensive approach to it in a matter of a few months.
Okay, thank you. So I guess at this stage, so if Joe wants to split motion, we're okay with that. Does anyone second Joe's option on the sidewalks at this time?
And is that with my recommended change?
Yes, but without.
Was there support for Joe's motion?
Uh, that was David, correct? Greg?
She wasn't being heard, I don't think.
Who seconded for us, please? Mr. Greg, was that you that seconded Joe's motion?
I can't. Or John?
Don't have him. David, are you still with us?
Was there support for Joe's motion?
There. Uh, we were waiting for it.
Did you lose a couple of members? No, they're still there.
Dave was caller one, and I had Ryan Schultz on.
Oh, okay, okay.
If everyone is still there.
Sorry.
Mr. Greg, were you seconding Joe's proposal? Or in favor of it?
Can you hear me?
Uh, yes, Dave, I, can you hear me, though? Would be more appropriate.
No, I can, yeah.
Now you can. Okay, getting close to this thing, I'm going to be wearing it. Okay. Are you in motion of Joe's motion? Are you in favor of Joe's motion?
No.
No? You're not in favor of the sidewalks?
No, I was, I was going to make a motion for both sidewalks and bikes if his had failed.
Oh. Uh, Laura?
I think you have a motion that's waiting for a second, so if it's not seconded, then it'll it'll die.
It'll die. Okay. Kind of in favor of both, so, all right, so.
Just for record point of order, we can have two motions, so supporting the sidewalk one doesn't mean you won't be able to support the bicycle one, so.
That's true. Laura already indicated that we can do that, yeah. So, Dave? Or myself, if you were in favor.
To move forward, I would like to support Joe's motion.
Thank you, Mayor. So at this stage, I have, who wants to spit all this back to someone?
I can.
Motion for sidewalks. Abigail, is that where you jump in here a second?
Yes, yep. So this is a motion to approve the sidewalk with the amendment, the change that John had made, only the sidewalk portion. Baumann?
Yes.
Philkins?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
And Putvin?
Yes.
Okay.
Would you like to go right into, well, somebody needs to make a motion for the bikes now.
Please, now, David.
I'll make a motion to approve the bicycle portion of it.
With the, with the proposed change?
Yeah.
Okay, and do I have a second?
I'll support.
Supported by Mayor Philkins.
Okay. So Baumann, yes or no?
No.
Philkins?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
And Putvin?
Yes. Okay. Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you, Abigail. Are we good with public hearing at this time, everything en bode? Okay. So I'm going to move down my agenda sheet. New business, we have none. Old business, we have none. Any board member comments this evening? Seeing none, any communications that we are unaware of?
None that I'm aware of.
Okay. We also, public comments, anyone in our viewing audience or online audience has any comments? We are, we are open to listen. Any other business staff?
No.
And if no one cares, we are done and adjourned, and thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Great to see you, everyone.
Bye.